Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Bastian. I'm the chairperson of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals. This is September 28th, 2021, and it's past the hour of 6 o'clock. This open meeting of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of June 16th, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting, they do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the links listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. And now I'd like to confirm that the board members and the persons, okay, members, as I call your name, please respond to the affirmative stating your presence. Dick Rand?
Present.
Paul Taggaferry?
Present.
Mark Pretan?
Present.
Brad Blatchett?
Present.
And Susie Soliskin?
I sent.
Okay, so that's, oh, yes, all right, so that's five voting members and Susie is our alternate. Also attending is Kathy Jewbert.
I am here.
Fred Federico?
Bob Frederico.
I'm sorry, Bob Frederico and Fred Litchfield, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Fred as well.
There you go. All right, thank you. All right, so it is past the hour of 6 o'clock. And the first item on the agenda is to consider the petition of Arthur Pierce of Wegmans Food Markets, Inc. for a variance for a new wall sign on the property located at 9102 Shops Way, MAP 106, parcel seven, in the industrial zoning district. And if the person who is presenting for this could be brought in, Jim, and state their name and relationship.
Yep, so I brought in Tyrese. There are a few other people out there, so I'm not sure if anyone else is with this applicant as well. So if you're with an applicant and I don't bring you over, please feel free to raise your hand and I'll move you over with the applicant.
It should, it should only be me tonight, so, uh, thank, thank you so much. I am not Arthur Pierce. I'm Tyrese Bryant from the Wegmans Site Development Group. Arthur is on a well-deserved vacation this week with his wife, so I am stepping in for him. I didn't know if you needed to, I kind of cut out when I was rejoining, so I don't know if you said anything when I was rejoining as a panelist.
No, just to state your name and your relationships with the project.
Okay, so I'm Tyrese Bryant. I am project manager in our site development group for Wegmans. And did you need to swear me in or am I good to go?
You're good to go.
Okay, so I am here. I will get right through this. I am here for a variance. We are seeking to swap out an existing sign on our food market. If you're looking at the food market, it's going to be on the left-hand side. We are seeking a variance to swap out our fork, dish, and goblet sign, which is 57.3 square foot, and we are asking for relief to replace that sign with a wine, liquor, and beer sign, which totals 75.4 square feet. Obviously, the code requires us to obtain a variance for an additional sign. It's not an additional sign. Again, we're replacing this for relief. As it stated throughout our application, the total square footage of the four signs are relatively small to the overall square footage of our, of our large food market and our building facade. In addition, the building frontage, as you all know, are not, it's not visible to the public roadway. It's in a, it's a building and a development with other retail locations. This signage is key for marketing purposes, for the success of businesses within the food market with the products that we, that we sell of wine, liquor, and beer. There's no, we see no substantial detriment to the public good based on the distance and the location of the business. And granting up this relief will neither nullify or degrade, in our opinion, the zoning laws. And as I said, we are looking just to relieve from one signage to an additional sign, to a new signage, pointing out a key marketing piece in our business. I, as you see in the plans, the signage is going to be white lettering, just as the Wegmans sign, Wegmans signage. And it does illuminate and red, just like the main Wegmans sign and the Market Cafe sign on the building. So it'll be that same white block lettering and the same illumination at night. Right now, the goblet, the goblet and the fork don't illuminate, so that will be the only difference is that there will be an additional illumination with this sign. But like I said, it'll be the same type of illumination as the Wegmans main sign and the Market Cafe signage. That's pretty much all I have. I think you all have all of the additional information. And so I'm open to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bryant. Okay, members of the board. Okay, well, at the moment, staff, any questions or concerns? All right, Bob.
I'll sit here.
Okay, Bob Federico.
Bob, it's good to see you. I know we've talked via email before, so it's good to see you.
Yes, Tyrese, how are you tonight?
I'm well.
Madam Chair, the zoning interpretation form had two things on it. One was adding a fourth sign, which requires a variance. I don't believe the applicant is asking for a fourth sign tonight. They were just asking to exceed the 100-square-foot sign area that's allowed in the particular district. One of the things that's difficult to calculate is I asked the applicants to provide the area of all the other signs to determine how much relief is to be granted. Unfortunately, I did not receive that information. So I don't know how much square footage relief you'd want to write into your decision. However, the increase in area, I could do my math real quick here, 75.
I think he said about 18.
18.1.
I think you're right, yeah, 18.1 feet. So, you know, 18.1 feet in the grand scheme of things is not huge. But then again, I don't have a specific number. Probably just, if you want to write in your decision, if you decide granted, let's just add 18 square feet to the, to the current allotted amount.
Okay, is it, is it possible that the adding the fourth sign is because it's going to be lit versus not?
The, the current sign, if you will, there is, is a relief sign. It's not lit. It's, it's almost like it's carved into the side of the building, which does constitute a sign. So in terms of, you know, requiring a fourth sign, it's, it's, you're replacing one sign with a new sign. So the actual count of signs is going to remain the same.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bryant, do you know what the actual total is?
No, I do not, Bob. I wasn't aware of that question prior to the hearing tonight, or I would have provided that information to you. And I apologize for that.
All right, thank you. Brad, did you have a question?
No, no.
Oh, I thought I saw a hand, okay. All right, board members, concerns? Okay, all right, well, we can come back in a minute. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to now ask any one of the attendees if you have any questions or concerns, if you could raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Okay, just make sure I'm telling. Okay, I see none. One more time around the squares here, any question?
Um, I remember when we did another sign that was in this development, it was the total square feet. So the, the 100 square feet for these, is that all of the Wegmans signs? I was just confused about that. It's all of them together?
Yes, it signs in the industrial district or the MCOD district, which is an overlay district, allows for the aggregate of 100 square feet per retailer. Several of the buildings being bigger in scale. I believe we've done probably four or five variances through the, through the four years that I've been in Northborough to either add additional signage or have a sign that is over the 100 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant, do you anticipate phasing out the other signs in any time in the near future? Is there any program here that we should be aware of to give you more than the 20 feet you need? Other than you'll be back here in three months looking for another 20 feet?
No, 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 I, I don't see that at all. We're not phasing out anything that's current on top of the pharmacy, the Wegmans and the Market Cafe, or adding any additional signage. I would say usually, usually for any Wegmans food market, depending on what state we're in and what laws, you're either going to see the Wegmans Market Cafe or Pharmacy signage, if there's a pharmacy, or wine, liquor, and beer. I'm really surprised personally that wine, liquor, and beer wasn't on, wasn't initially a part of this package because we're seeing that more in food markets that do have wine, beer, liquor incorporated, especially as we continue to grow in states like North Carolina, where like Massachusetts, it's in the store as well. So this is, this is a normal package that you're seeing before you where I, I, where we're seeing where this goblet, fork, and spoon are being phased out. And you will see Market Cafe, Wegmans, and wine, beer, and liquor if it's a part of the food market.
Okay.
Thank you. Paul?
So were these, was there a variance for the initial signs or is this additional, just the first variance for signs?
I believe that there was a variance to exceed the 100 square feet right from the get-go.
Yeah, I would look for the town on that. I would, I would, I would assume, and Kathy, I don't know if you, that there was a variance for all of the signage or at least some of the signage on the building because it exceeds that.
I can, if you want to, you know, go, you know, just continue on, I can, I'll just pull up the old file and check it while, while you're discussing it or.
If you would, because I don't want to close the hearing and then have you bring back something that is of a concern to somebody.
Yep, let me just double check then.
Okay, Brad?
Yes, so a question to the applicant, Mr. Bryant, so the, the sign you're looking to ask for, is it replacing it or is it on top of the current sign? Just want to make sure there's not an.
So we'll be, so we'll be replacing, so that, so as Bob mentioned earlier, the goblet plate, the goblet fork and plate, it's, it's, it's etched in the ethos. So we'll be replacing that ethos, taking it out and replacing it with brand-new ethos and then putting the new signage over it. So that, that piece of ethos, it's trying to, it's edged, it's, it's defined in the ethos, that ethos is going out, it's being replaced with ethos, with new ethos, and then the sign is going to be installed.
Okay, and, and second question, is this just aligning with current branding?
Yes, yep, 100%, 100%.
Okay.
The, the wine, liquor, and beer is very common, a part of our, our new sign pack, our new packages. You're seeing a bit less of the, in the ethos of the goblet, the, the plate and the fork. Like I said, depending on what state we're in, what laws in, and what laws you have around beer, wine, and liquor, this is pretty standard for us.
Okay, and final question, so new sign, you're going to adhere to our current bylaws as far as hours of operation? As far as hours where the sign's lit, it's not lit, things like that?
Yep, yes, the current, what the, what you see, what happens with the pharmacy, the Wegmans and the Market Cafe will be the same with the wine, liquor, and beer signage.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Going to give anyone out in the audience a chance if they want, while Kathy is looking up whether this is the first, second, or second variance for signage. Okay. Would have been easier to find.
That file is probably a foot thick.
It probably is, for sure.
The other thing I've discovered is that this, the whole project up there is actually under two different addresses. Believe it or not, it's under southwest cutoff and then it's off of, there's another address. So, you know, the file is significantly thicker than anything else we have in town. And it is under two two addresses.
It was a major project. I still remember Marshall Gould coming to the board's selectmen meeting saying, "It's 33,000 square foot of shopping experience." I was like, but it's still just grocery shopping. I mean, I'm sure it is.
That's how I ended up in Northborough. The first Wegmans, we were traveling here from Boston, like every week.
I've never even been in one.
I, I grew up in upstate New York, so it's my, my grocery store of choice.
What part of upstate?
Um, the Syracuse area.
Nice, great.
Yeah.
A 315, so you're, were you a 315'er?
I still am a 315'er. One of the older ones, the Syracuse one, we used to take my grandma weekly. Like, we knew all the heads of all the departments. My friend's dad was the butcher, like, you know, it was hard, it was like a neighborhood giant store. That's just how it was, so.
I grew up with A and Ps and my, my area code was 516 or 212, different part of New York.
So what address are we making a decision on for this variance? Is it all one?
I think it's 9102 Shops Way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we just have about our filing system. We should just be able to type in Wegmans variance.
Hey, Fran, do you remember a year Wegmans started, by any chance?
It, well, it had to have been after 2011. I mean, maybe 2013, did it get here by then?
2011 it opened.
Yeah, Northborough opened 2011.
October. It was two weeks before I gave birth to my first son. I came to the grand opening.
All right, folks, it's, it's not as easy as you think. I can tell you everything about Old Navy and everything about the, the Loop Two, as we called it, which is the, you know, where Applebee's and, but it's, this file is, there's not just a Wegmans file. So it's merged into the entire shopping plaza, so we've got to extrapolate that out. So it, I, it's not something I can give to you right this second, hopefully by the end of the meeting. But if, if it's that important, you know, you might have to keep the hearing open, but, but otherwise, you know, it's, it's just a, I'm calling a simple variance, just to increase this, the sign has already been, you know, granted, and, and they're just, they're changing out the lettering, which requires additional notification, and then they're enlarging it.
Okay, all right, so we can agree that the, the current signage is over the 100 square feet that would have been allowed. So it is likely that a variance was granted for that. This is at least a, an additional variance to add to the current signage from 57 feet to 75 feet.
Yeah, and from the, from the existing drawings that I have, you, you can't, you can't determine from the, from the drawings in this, this particular file, you can't determine what the size of the other signs are.
All right, okay, all right, so it's the will of the board, is it, I mean, Brad, you asked the question, I'll start with you. Do you feel it is significant enough to hold the hearing open for a, for a month to get that information or you feel, I mean?
I, I think Wegmans has been in good faith this whole time. They're just changing their branding, changing, you know, their, their signage. I have no issue moving forward with this hearing.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to give you first dibs since you brought up, no, Dick, sorry.
I say, I agree with Brad. I think we move forward and just add an additional 20 feet to the signage that's there.
Okay, all right, well, so I will entertain a motion to close, let me just double check since we've had conversation. I don't want anybody in the audience to think they're being slighted. So this is a public hearing. This is the last opportunity, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on the issue, to raise your hand. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I hope that we close the hearing.
That's Mark. Dick seconded. Roll call vote. All those in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bryant, for your patience with us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider the petition of David and Christina Mofford for a variance for the installation of an in-ground pool on the property located at 313 Brigham Street, MAP 93, parcel 29, in the Residential Sea zoning district and the groundwater overlay district area one. And Jim, if you could bring in, I believe the Moffords are in the audience.
Yeah, so I brought in all three. There are three instances of the same name. So I'm not too sure what's going on there, but we should find out in a moment.
All right, all right, when you are all in, if you could each state your name and your address, please. Here we go. Okay, we can see you. If you can unmute, there you go.
Yep, we got it.
All right, and are the other two in there? Okay.
We seem to be appearing multiple times. I don't know.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Christina and David Mofford, 313 Brigham Street.
Okay, and, and if you can give a summary on what brings you to us this evening?
Sure, I just wanted to confirm that you all received a summary statement in addition to the application that we submitted.
Yes.
Okay, and so I'm, I can just go into a statement for this evening.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will start by introducing myself and my family. My name, I already did that part, but my name's Christine Mofford, and this is my husband, Dave. We have two children, Cameron, who is six, and Kaylee, who is four. We are here to apply for a zoning variance in order to install an in-ground swimming pool on our property at 313 Brigham Street, which we purchased as new construction in June 2019. Our lot was created in 2016 by dividing a larger lot into two, resulting in one conforming and one non-conforming lot. Our property at 313 is non-conforming because it is below the required minimum size in its location in the groundwater overlay protection district. The initial variance was granted to allow for this division in construction, but with conditions. The most significant of the conditions is that our lot needs 100% recharge of any rainfall runoff on our property. It is this condition that we are seeking relief from and requesting amendment of in order to install an in-ground pool, which cannot be recharged because it is a body of water. Please allow me to present the following facts of our case, which support our request for variance. Our lot is 56,367 square feet in size, which is significantly larger than the required minimum of 20,000 square feet in Zone Residential Sea, and also larger than almost all of the lots in our surrounding neighborhood. The only reason we have the 80,000-square-foot minimum is because our property is a newly-created lot located in Groundwater Protection Overlay District Area One, which was established in 1986. With the proposed project, our house will remain residential. The use and character of the lot will not be changed. We do not wish to increase the size of our home or impact the existing septic system. An in-ground swimming pool will not have a negative impact on our surrounding neighbors or the public good at large. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. We have provided letters of support that we have gotten from three of our neighbors, the Patels at 307 Brigham Street, the Chemmets at 305 Brigham Street, and the Flemings at 102 Sunset Drive. These three homes either directly above our property or will be able to see the proposed pool from our home or yard. Having an in-ground pool is similar to many of the properties, which also have a pool and are in close proximity to our lot. In our section of the groundwater overlay district area one, there are a total of 45 pools. Our lot size is larger than all but two of these properties, in most cases significantly larger. At present, our only option for installing a swimming pool would be to enclose it or put a roof over it. This would stand out and be in significant disharmony with the other existing homes, which have pools in our neighborhood. The proposed spot on our, in our backyard, as shown on page nine of our application, is an appropriate location for the use of an in-ground pool. In our application, we are asked to indicate whether our variance would substantially impact the public good or derogate the purpose of the zoning bylaws. We do not feel that the roughly 700 square feet associated with our swimming pool will have a substantial impact on this system. This is only 1.2% of our total property's square footage. Furthermore, it is 0.5% of the original 313 Brigham Street property prior to the ZBA variance in 2016. This initial law encompassed a total of 136,367 square feet. According to the bylaws, 15% of that property could be impervious surface without needing any recharge. When our property was split into two, our lot at 313 lost that 15, 15% allowance and now must be and currently is 100% recharged. The lot at 307, which is at the 80,000-square-foot minimum, still gets the allotted 15%, which now only equates to 12,000 square feet. Combining their 12,000 square feet with our 700 square feet for a pool is roughly 9% of the original lot's total surface. This is well below the previous allowance of about 20,000 square feet. This is well below the previous allowance of about twenty thousand square feet. If the purpose of the groundwater protection overlay districting is to prevent an increase in impervious surface. Beyond that which which existed prior to nineteen eighty-six, it is important to note this fact. That even with our swimming pool, the resulting net impervious surface is actually a much lower square footage than what was possible. Before the twenty sixteen ZBA variance, when the original lot was divided. We are committed to the hundred the requirement of a hundred percent recharge with everything else on our property. We cannot realistically recharge a body of water. Lastly, we would like to emphasize the uniqueness of our circumstances. We purchased a property that requires a hundred percent recharge. We have not been able to identify any other ZBA cases where. There what this was a condition of a variance granted for a new non-conforming lot in the groundwater protection overlay district. We believe that the following three ZBA cases where variances or special permits were granted. Are consistent with the aforementioned findings of fact in our case. And therefore support our request for relief. Two hairs ab, case sixteen oh nine. This particular case most closely matches our circumstances. And involves a total of three variances which were granted between nineteen ninety and twenty sixteen. Few to a builder and one to the subsequent owner. In December nineteen ninety, a builder requested a variance to allow the division of a tract of land into two separate lots. With less than the required sideline setback. And less than the required size underground water protection provisions. This property is located in area two of the groundwater protection overlay district. Where lots are required to be a minimum of forty thousand square feet. The original conforming lot was forty thousand twenty-five square feet. But when divided, each of the two resulting non-conforming lots were only twenty thousand square feet in size. Which is only half of the required minimum. The initial larger lot had stu- two structures on it. In the form of cottages, as indicated on the plan of land from February nineteen ninety-one in the mass registry of deeds. In nineteen ninety-six, the same builder requested another variance for groundwater. Along with a special permit in order to allow for the removal of the existing cottage. And replacement with a newly constructed single-family home. The ZBA voted to approve, but with the condition that the new dwelling would not have more than three bedrooms. There was no mention of recharge requirements. Then in July twenty sixteen, the now owner requested to amend the nineteen ninety-six variance. Despite the above-mentioned condition, the house in actuality was built as a four-bedroom single-family home. With complementing septic system in ninety-seven. The present owner was now requesting that the ZBA amend the original condition to allow for a four-bedroom home. And also approve a further expansion with the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-four two-story addition. This five hundred and seventy-six square feet is two point nine percent of their total property size. From that case's findings of fact. Quote, the requested amendment to ZBA case ninety-six oh seven. Will not change the use of the single-family home, and therefore it will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. Nor will it nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the North Borough zoning bylaw. In addition, it will not adversely affect the neighborhood. And there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, end quote. There was still no mention of change to recharge requirements. Seventy-one Pleasant Street, case oh four oh seven. A builder requested variance in order to split a current conforming lot into two separate non-conforming lots. In groundwater protection overlay district area two, for the purpose of building a new single-family home on each lot. In area two, the lot size is required to be forty thousand or more. And the two new non-conforming lots would be just over twenty-five thousand square feet. From the case's finding of facts, quote. The single lot as currently constituted does contain more than forty thousand square feet. The two proposed lots would not each contain at least forty thousand square feet. It is important to note that the underlying zoning RC and general residents requires only twenty thousand square feet. And fifteen square feet for a conforming lot. The only reason the forty thousand square feet area is applicable is due to this area. This being area two of the groundwater protection overlay district. The size of each requested lot is over twenty-five thousand square feet and is equal to or greater than the majority of the lots on Pleasant Street. And John Edward Drive, which comprised the neighborhood of which the locus is apart, end quote. No conditions regarding recharge requirements were indicated. The last case is two Hawthorne Circle, case number thirteen twenty-one. The owner was requesting a special permit in order to install an in-ground pool. Less than the required distance from a side property line. This property is located not far from our home in area one of the groundwater protection overlay district. The property is twenty thousand nine hundred and nine square feet in size. Which is less than the required eighty thousand square feet minimum in area one. From the case's findings of fact, quote, the subject property is non-conforming and the existing single-family home on the property is a non-conforming structure. The in-ground the in-ground pool, as proposed, will be an extension of the non-conformity of the single-family home. The subject property is in a residential neighborhood. With the use of pools on other lots throughout the neighborhood in close proximity to the subject property. And is an appropriate location for the proposed use of an in-ground pool. The addition of an in-ground pool will not change the existing residential use on the subject property. And therefore the proposed use is in substantial harmony. With the purposes of the North Borough zoning bylaw. It is no different in character than the other residential lots in the surrounding neighborhood, many with in-ground pools. Or in its effects on the neighborhood or on the property in the vicinity. The proposed non-conforming in-ground pool on the subject property. Will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the existing non-conforming single-family home on the subject property, end quote. In closing, we ask that you voice any specific questions or concerns that you may have regarding this proposal, so that we may have the opportunity. To address them here and now. We thank you in advance for your thoughtful consideration of our request for a variance.
Thank you very much. Okay. Start with questions or comments. Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I I guess I tried to do some research on this case. Going back to twenty sixteen, and obviously there were several groundwater meetings. Going back to that point, and then subsequent ZBA meetings in which. You know, one single-family eighty thousand square foot lot was approved, and then. The second lot was also approved, I believe it's fifty-six and change thousand square feet. Um and so. My understanding, um at least going through the notes and the variances, um is that. There really is just one slight change, I believe the applicant is asking for. And that is the one hundred percent recharge of impervious cover, which obviously. With a pool, you cannot recharge a pool, right?
You cannot, we've tried to figure it out.
Right, or or if you if you, I guess the only way you technically can is if you build a roof over a pool, which. Probably defeats the purpose of a pool, but. And so I guess my first question is uh to Fred, um and. What would be the reason? Or what do you think would be a reason that the groundwater committee? Would request a hundred percent recharge for a property? Because I'm I'm trying to understand. And obviously it's five years ago, but why that was initially. A condition put on this property.
Good evening, the. My recollection is that the reason that condition was proposed. Was because the lot that was being created was thirty percent smaller than the eighty thousand square feet that was required. I don't believe that there have been very many instances of variances. Issued in the groundwater one area since nineteen eighty-six, when the bylaw was adopted. The the ZBA has. To best of my opinion, of best of my knowledge, historically not granted variances in groundwater area in terms of impervious cover. Very often, there are obviously a few. Even fewer in area one. And so the committee at the time recommending approval of that variance was to maintain the hundred percent recharge. As part of the condition of approval of the variance because the lot was so much smaller than what's required in the bylaw.
Thank you. Could I just make a comment?
Oh, Fred, Mr. Mofford.
Oh, sure, sorry, um I guess what I would ask is, um my understanding is, you know, when you compare area one to area two, the differences are accounted for by the. Vast difference in minimum required square footage, so area two. Is forty thousand square feet, and area one is eighty thousand square feet. So I guess I I I'm still wondering why the cases we presented, where they were decreased closer to fifty percent. It it doesn't sound like they had to do a recharge, or maybe Fred, you can comment on like how that was handled with those cases. I understand it's area two, but again, that difference is accounted for in the requirements of square footage.
Okay, and I want to ask you just to hold on for a second, Fred, because I apologize, uh Paul, I think I have a follow-up for Fred.
Well, I mean, I guess my follow mainly is. If we have eighty eighty thousand square foot lot, right, so the other lot. Right, fifteen percent of that could be impervious surface without recharge, right? And so this this, you know, one hundred percent recharge was done because it was thirty percent less, right? So if you take eighty thousand square feet. Times the fifteen percent, you can have twelve thousand square feet of coverage. Fifty-six thousand square feet times the fifteen percent, it's eighty-four hundred, right? So there is a difference there, right, of say thirty-six hundred square feet of space. But rather than making up for that difference. They're just saying it's a hundred percent, you know, like they're not like. You know, because I believe reading through the application. It's literally seven hundred square feet of a pool. That they would like relief on, right, because you, I mean, if they build a. You know, you have a pool, and then you have a three thousand square foot patio or, you know, stamped concrete. That area can be recharged into a drywell or something, right? So it's it's literally just because it's the pool, the seven hundred square feet. And because this one hundred percent. Stipulation is on there that they can't have that, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess it's not really necessarily a full variance to do whatever, it's more of an adjustment to a variance from. Whenever it was, twenty sixteen. Right, I believe that that's kind of what they're looking to do. But. I I guess that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thanks. Other members of the board, Mark, just make sure you unmute.
Uh Fred, I have a question about the purpose of recharge. Is it to prevent um runoff, running off the property and spoiling other areas? Or is it to? I guess, put the groundwater directly under into the subs- subsurface directly underneath the property. And am I making myself clear?
Yes, I believe that the second option is the one that's uh most pertinent. The goal behind the recharge is to put the water back into the ground, so it stays in with. Within the aquifer that it's coming, that it's that the lot's being built on. Uh as opposed to if it runs off down the street and could go into a different aquifer or into a whole different drainage system, the idea is to. Recharge the water on the site where impervious cover is being created.
Uh yeah, okay, but um in the case of a pool. The water wouldn't be running down the street, it'd be falling into the pool and just accumulating into the pool.
Well, depending on how the pool water is discharged.
Right.
Where does that water go, and that water is chlorinated, which in fact is a. Illicit discharge if it's not properly de-chlorinated before it goes back into the ground. So there are some other risks associated with the water just going into the pool and being part of uh the operation of the pool.
Uh so I just a question. So if they were putting in a seven hundred foot patio. They would be able to then build something so that the water on the patio could get back into the ground and not go down the street, but because it's not a patio. Uh it this is just just another version of the same question that Mark just asked, right? It doesn't have that same ability of just spilling off the patio onto the rest of the grass.
Correct, there's no way to capture the water. That falls over the pool area, goes into the pool and mixes with the chlorinated water and.
Alright.
Recharged.
Can I just clarify just for?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mofford.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, so just to to clarify, because we didn't bring it up in our comments here, but so co- so currently we're at a hundred percent recharge. And so our driveway is sloped in such a fashion. That all of the water feeds into a drain and then is collected in a drywell. Where it can then seep back into the ground and and replenish the aquifer. Uh and same thing with the gutters, um the gutters themselves actually go directly into the ground and are piped to that same drywell. So then they can go in, so any rainwater that would be from either the driveway or the house now is recharged through that drywell. And as you mentioned before, we're, you know, we're happy to to continue that with. The patio, if a shed, you know, other kinds of structures that would be impervious. With the pool, we're just requesting relief for the actual pool itself. The, you know, the seven hundred or so square feet.
Okay, thank you again.
And one other comment, I'm so sorry, I just wanted to add too with the pool. As one can imagine, water evaporates, and so th- there is a point to be made, I suppose, so if rainwater is falling into the pool, it's then collected into the pool. And that means less that we would potentially take from our our own well to fill the pool, does that make sense?
Just for, yeah, for.
Just it's another piece of information to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is. I muted myself and then started speaking, um this just totally random, and if it was a saltwater pool, would it matter? Versus a chlorine pool, um Fred, or it doesn't matter because it's still just not natural water?
Doesn't matter, it's not, if they're not able to recharge the area that the pool occupies, then doesn't matter. And the saltwater, salt is is just as hard to dissipate before it gets into the groundwater um as chlorine.
Alright, thank you, just just random, I'm sorry, Susie.
That you actually took my question.
Alright, um. Okay, any other questions or concern, now, Dick. I mute, you have to unmute, Dick, sorry.
In the application of page nine, it shows a rectangular area around the pool, is that going to be uh impervious also?
That would be a patio, and you can um per- you can either slope, I believe, you can recharge a patio, basically.
Okay, but this, it's still going to be impervious, but it's going to go into your recharge system?
Yeah, we, I mean, we may have to install like another drywell or whatever needs to happen, and we would work, I assume, with Fred and and a designer on how to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, so my follow-up to Dick's question then is, was that patio factored into the two percent? Because that's still more impervious surface, that's. It's more than seven hundred square feet of impervious surface that they're looking to create.
That is correct, but it that we could a hundred percent recharge. So that they were not seeking relief from the hundred percent recharge requirement for that, it's just for the pool, does that make sense?
Yeah, they would just have to factor into a decision, I.
Yeah, there'd have to be like an as-build that would show, you know, all of that that recharging, you know, that it's all been done.
Okay, thank you, uh Fred.
Uh there's actually um a few things that would have to go into the consideration if the. Board were to consider granting the variance, there um as I spoke to the Moffords in the. Way back a little bit about the whole pool and a hundred percent cover. I encouraged them to apply for what they wanted, and that the best they could do was to recharge everything but the pool. But because they weren't sure if the variance would be granted, they didn't. Feel the need to spend a lot of money on the design and the plan, and so none of that was submitted, and. We would somehow need to factor all that into an approval or continue the hearing, get that information, and then. Grant the variance if the board chooses to do so, so, but it could be done.
Okay, thank you. Paul, did you have your hand again?
Um, actually, I think, well, I guess my question was, so I have this picture here.
Okay.
Um, page eight, uh, it, it, and it just shows like where the plan is, is close to the lot line. And I guess my question was that we're not going to have to deal with a dimensional variance at some point down the road and that it would be fit in to, um, your property appropriately?
Yes, I, our, our plan would be to hug that lot line as far as possible, but I think it's fifteen feet away from the lot line is where we can, where we can go. So we would go, you know, we would get it, you know, surveyed and, and, and put it as close as we can get it, but without needing, you know, another variance or anything like that.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional, um, questions, concerns from staff?
Uh, just want to make sure that you got the letter, uh, sent to you on behalf of the groundwater advisory committee. They did not recommend approval of the variance, but, um, were sympathetic to the cause, but felt as though a second variance on the same property wasn't really warranted.
Right, thank you, Fred. And everyone did get that. Okay, all right, um, well, members of the board are pondering additional questions. I'm going to, this is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience has any questions or concerns or would like to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized to speak. Oh, okay, I am bringing in Jason Perro. If you can state your name again and address, please.
Uh, hello, Jason Perro, uh, member of the board of selectmen and the selectmen's representative on the groundwater advisory committee. Um, I, I did just want to echo Fred's last statement. Um, when the applicants were before the groundwater advisory committee, um, I believe that by and large, the committee was sympathetic to their concern. Um, I, I think the committee's stance fundamentally was that, uh, when the prior variance was granted to subdivide and create this smaller lot, at that time, they had apparently imposed this a hundred percent recharge condition. And the groundwater advisory committee, um, was reluctant to recommend approval, given that circumstance. Um, absent that particular condition, I don't think groundwater advisory committee had any other concern um, with respect to this proposal. So I just wanted to offer that, uh, expanded clarification. Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Okay. Just make sure, anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing none.
Paul has.
Yep.
Yep, um. So I guess, and this is probably my inexperience, how typical is a hundred percent recharge?
That would be a question, I guess, for Fred.
Like, I mean, is, is it just, I tried looking back at other groundwater cases and I, I, I mean, I couldn't find one, but.
Um, I don't believe it's typical, but neither are variances on area requirements in a groundwater, uh, district. So specifically the area one. In this case, the well that the town's trying to protect is directly across the street from their property.
Okay, and then I guess another question is, um, like what sort of, uh, mediation for say, pool contamination, uh, can be taken by someone who owns a pool to, to limit the exposure to the groundwater from chlorine type of chemicals? Like is there something that they can put in to help clean some of the water before it does?
Um, I'm not a pool expert, but I do have a pool. Um, some pool filters come with a cartridge type system where they don't backwash onto the property. They just, uh, take the cartridge out and clean it manually and put it back in. Uh, sometimes that limits it. Yeah. Beyond that, I, I don't have much knowledge in how pools are, can or can't be regulated. I, all I can tell you is that our stormwater bylaw requires a, a chlorine discharge into a town way or recharge system or the drainage system in illicit discharge unless there is zero parts per million of chlorine detected in that water. Um, and sometimes we have to, uh, go and stop residents from lowering the water in their pool until the chlorine has been dissipated, which generally only takes about a week of not adding any chlorine, which is fine in the spring and the fall, but not so hot in the summertime. So it's a tricky thing to, to keep track of. But generally people are lowering it in the spring when they're getting ready to start it up or in the fall when they're packaging it up for the winter and it's not so much of an issue. So I've only, we've only had one or two cases in town where people were discharging water out into the town's drainage system.
Right, and then, uh, just last question, um, sorry, Fred. Uh, is the closest place that they could discharge the street for this particular property? When you say like, so if they want to empty their pool water? And you said they have to empty it into a town drain?
Um, in their case, as the Moffords indicated, the previous condition of a hundred percent recharge carries with it a swell along the driveway. So any water that gets discharged to the driveway ultimately goes into that swell and then into a, a recharge system that's on their property. So, um, unless they were to take the hose all the way out to the street and connect it into, onto the surface water in Brigham Street, um, it can't, it won't leave, shouldn't leave the property.
Or they just don't chlorinate their water for a certain period of time?
Right.
And then they can.
If they're looking to discharge water from their property, they would need to make sure that there's no more chlorine in the pool and then it's not a violation, it's not a illicit discharge.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Susie.
The natives were getting restless, I had to mute myself here. Um, so when we were talking about the one hundred percent, um, the recharging and how it would have to be enclosed with a roof over it, is there anything temporary that could be done or even something that could be put over for ream? Or is it, it would have to be an indoor pool? I try, I tried Googling it and it was, it was like how to recharge a pool filter and, you know, and I'm like, no, that's not what I'm talking about.
I, I'll, I'll, I offered, I suggested that that's the only way it could be done was the water would have to be captured somehow and then put off into the drainage system that could then be recharged into the ground. I believe the Moffords looked into a retractable, uh, cover for the pool that was electronically or electrically operated. But if it's, if it's within the confines of the pool and it rains, the water still goes into the pool and it doesn't actually get recharged. So the only way would be if something extended over the pool and it's, it could be a structure with no sides, doesn't have to have anything but a roof, but it really does defeat the purpose of having a pool or it becomes quite an additional expense that, again, is not so, not so desirable.
Right, I was just, I was thinking of like those patio things that, you know, that come out, the overhangs, the cloth ones, like something that could be extended when it rained or, you know, just different things.
Uh, well, it becomes, it becomes, I guess it becomes difficult to make sure it's over every time it rains and it becomes maybe an enforcement issue. I think the simplest thing is there, is either a yes or no on their variance. I don't know what else there are for options. I know that the Moffords looked at a few options before applying for the variance and I believe they came up with the fact that it's either this way or they can't, they can't do the pool that they want to. Um, so I don't know if there are any other options.
Can I, can I respond to that as well?
Mr. Mofford?
Yeah, so we did look, as Fred mentioned, into the retractable covers. Actually, when I had consulted with Connor Stone Engineering, he, uh, Vito Colana had, um, suggested that as a proposed option. Cause he, I guess another town wall fam or something he had done an ASBIL for and they were willing to accept the retractable cover because it had a pump on top of it that would pump the rainwater that fell onto it and go, went into a drain of what, I'm sorry, excuse me, dry well. Um, and we did look into like probably more what you're referring to, which is like these huge structures that like slide and, I mean, they're monstrosities. And we were quoted fifty thousand dollars because of the fact that we live in New England, it would have to be able to hold the snow, um, in order to hold that. Um, if I may, I also wanted to comment on the, the zero percent recharge and someone had asked, you know, um, i- if that's been, like how that was determined. And, um, I had spent a healthy amount of time on the mass registry of deeds from two thousand eight to twenty twelve. I searched all decisions that were made in the town of Northborough and I, I did not discover any variance where zero percent, I'm sorry, a hundred percent recharge was required. And of course I looked at all the cases that were on the town's website from two thousand twelve to present. And as I mentioned in my, my statement, um, the two cases that we were able to come up with were area two and they were decreased by fifty percent with no a hundred percent recharge. So we are also, and it's unclear to us how the number of the zero percent was, um, identified. When I've read the meeting, um, minutes for the groundwater advisory and committee meeting in two thousand sixteen, um, it sounds like it was just, it was a number that was thrown out there. And I'm not sure if there was a process or a formula, um, so I'm just adding that comment as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's jump back into the audience one more time. Seeing no one. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns? Okay, if not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we close the hearing.
Mark?
Second.
That was Paul seconding. Okay, on the roll call, Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Dick? Oh, unmute, sorry.
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mofford. We'll, um, be discussing and, um, coming to a decision later this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it is on to the third, um, application is to consider the petition of RJ Deveraux Corporation for a variance for an industrial use on the property located at two hundred Bartlett Street, map sixty-six, parcel seven in the industrial zoning district and the groundwater overlay district areas one and three. And who do we have for this project? If you could say your names and your relationship and or address, um, to this project.
Um, members of the board, my name is Paula Deveraux. I'm an attorney at Pierce Atwood in Boston and I'm here representing the RJ Deveraux Corp., um, which is a family business that was started by my uncle. My father worked there and now it's owned by my brother. Um, and, um, there are a bunch of people with me today. Um, and, um, Dario Di Mare, who's Project Dark Attack, um, uh, Rick Gates, who works for, who's the project person in charge of this for RJ Deveraux Corp. Um, and Vito Colona, who's the project engineer. Um, I'd like to start out by, um, explaining what, what we're here before you for. Um, we're before you for variance for a particular use that the RJ Deveraux Corp. wants to make of this property. Uh, Deveraux Corp. has a purchase and sale agreement with the current owners of the property to buy the property, but it's conditioned on getting the approvals, um, that Deveraux Corp. needs to operate its business at the property. Um, the variance is for automotive repair, which is, uh, prohibited, a prohibited use in the groundwater district. And this property is, um, part in the ground, part in the groundwater one district and part in the groundwater three. Um, this, as a contractor's yard, the main use will be as a contractor's yard and that use requires a special permit from the planning board. But before we can go to the planning board to get the special permit for the contractor's use, um, because, um, automotive repair is an accessory use, um, to that, um, and it's prohibited, we are before you for the variance. Um, the, uh, this is a property that has been vacant for many years. Um, we believe that the work that we're going to be doing at the property will actually, um, be much better for the groundwater district because currently, right now, there's not a whole lot that gets treated on the property. Um, and the Deveraux Corp. will be using the property. Um, currently, uh, Lammy Automotive is in the property and Lammy is in the groundwater one district and has received both a variance from this board and a special permit from the planning board, um, back in two thousand seven, I think, or two thousand eight, um, for its use of the property. Um, and with that, I am going to turn it over to Dario. I don't know if you can share the plans, um, but so we can see just a plan of the property so that the board can understand, um, how it's going to be used.
Thank you, Attorney Deveraux. And if you could just state your name, um, for the record, please.
Okay, Dario Di Mar, three eighteen Main Street, Northborough, that's, uh, our office. And I've got Greg Kiesko would be here in case he speaks up because he's got all the brains. Um, so, well, thank you guys for taking the time. And, and I think as, as Paula had stated, um, what, what, can you see the cursor?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, so what we're looking at is using all of the existing buildings that are here. Um, we're going to renovate and upgrade what would be the administrative building and what we're calling the maintenance building. We're going to, where the cursor is, pull this paving back farther, um, to green up our front lawn and then add some, um, some vegetation here, mostly conifers to just kind of screen the parking. We would be adding conifers at the other existing entrance as well. This entrance would actually change a little bit because we wanted to make sure when we did look into the site, we'd be able to plant, um, even more plants just to make it look a little nicer. But the, the whole point of this meeting, I guess, is to talk about the groundwater overlay district variance where we have a use that was non-conforming. And it's really non-conforming, you'll see a big red line here in the groundwater overlay district one. Um, on the other side, we have the groundwater overlay district three. In groundwater overlay district one, Lammy's Automotive is a pre-existing non-conforming use, which is the auto repair. Um, that we can't change and aren't going to change because they would just continue to operate. Um, I'll just say for a while, they're a tenant at will. And we would then take the two larger buildings and we do want to fix them up, um, to make them nicer, uh, than what they look like now. Um, we, there was mention of, it was really a, um, um, I just lost it, an infiltration system here about thirty years ago where they did have, um, contaminants. And as far as the groundwater overlay district is concerned, that, that's obviously a big deal. It's actually a big deal anywhere. Um, that was cleaned, um, remediated and the owners of the, um, chipboard manufacturing plant actually got fined, I think, twenty years ago for not maintaining it. Um, but now there are wells here that by the rules of the DEP, um, the Deveraux's, if they buy the property, um, the good news for us is if they buy it and occupy it, which is their intent, they're obligated to maintain the wells, um, as they are now. So then at least we've got someone looking at them who's living on site. Um, they're also obviously responsible for, for Lammy Automotive as well. So if, if there was something there, there's someone on site to kind of keep an eye on, which is a good thing for us. Our intent, where it says maintenance, is to have any and all of our hazardous waste here. And, and it's really more oils, it's no different than, um, it, it's not, maintenance as our core business as Lammy's Automotive is. Our core business is ours being Deveraux's, um, just installing and repairing gas lines um, in this area of, of Massachusetts. And their operating procedures are such that most of the time. And their operating procedures are such that most of the time they're not here. Um, the vehicles that that would be being maintained and they would only maintain their own fleet. And I think they've got twenty-seven total vehicles. A lot of those, if if the person lives in Milton and they're going to a job. In Shrewsbury, they won't even stop here. And if they need to change their oil, they may change it on their own. Or if they have time, they could stop here and do their their oil change. They don't do heavy maintenance. They're not changing transmissions or engines. And seventy-five percent of their maintenance is for just a one piston. It it's like a weed whacker or a broom or what we would see as a lawnmower. That's what they're maintaining primarily here. Um, but they do have their trucks come in. They'll they'll change the oil or or um put in new winter wiper fluid. So we put a list. Of all of the the um, the chemicals and MSDS sheets. And the total gallons of everything stored in the entire building is about seven hundred gallons. Um, my house, I have what's called twin three thirties for my oil. So I have six hundred sixty gallons of the same waste that they have. Mine isn't spill contained, theirs will be. But I just want to put it in perspective. That these guys would have kind of what what a house would have in it with respect to oils because. They're gas heated for one, so that's that gets rid of all the oil for heating. They would have several fifty-five gallon drums of different oil types, plus their waste oil goes in the drum and then all the drums are stored. On spill, in spill containment um containers, which we can show you and present. You have a list of everything all the way down to the bathroom cleaners and and where they're stored as well in in certain cans. Um, but all that's in this building, which is outside the groundwater overlay district one, which was. Um, we wouldn't have to be here if if we didn't have half our site in in that, in the one district. But since we do, our intent was to locate everything here. We've got the um. Four different store yards in the back for for gravel um and sand. One of the questions that came up, you know, deal that very simply is what's called spoils. Um, and then, of course, everybody is alarmed by that word. As their standard, standard operating procedure, um, when when Devero's out putting in a gas line. There is a person watching when there's digging going on. And the way they dig, which is another one of the things that that came up, they dig with these vacuum trucks. That actually squirt water and suck up the dirt because a shovel hitting a metal pipe with gas in it. Doesn't work real well. Um, that's where you get the big explosion. So their way of digging is. They kind of spray water, suck it out, it goes into the truck. And if they hit any hazardous waste, anything, there's a person there that looks, actually sees and smells. When the digging's going on, if they hit something, Devero gets on the phone. They call the gas company or whoever they're working for. And all hazardous waste removal is done by other parties. These guys are not allowed to touch it both by their own rules. By their employees' rules and by the union rules. So they can't and won't bring anything back. By their standard operating procedures, which I I, you know, puts should put you at peace that that when we say spoils, it's just. Dirt with water and maybe big rocks. And what they do is they pour that dirt through a screen to get rid of the big rocks. Because they can't fill a hole in with big rocks because a big rock could break a gas line. Um, and then that's that's carted away. Um, another thing about how they operate, because there were a lot of questions about it. Um, one good thing, and again, it's within their own internal rules and the union rules. They they only operate eight hours a day. If they go over by fifteen minute, they have to pay for a whole shift of people for a whole eight hour shift. So they're only here, if someone's an early bird, seven o'clock, but seven thirty to four, and that's it. Um, it's it's really an eight-hour day operation. Um, they don't work at night. Is it possible for a vehicle to come here at night? Yes, if a gas line blew up nearby. And somehow they were needed, they could call them and they would go help fix the the gas line. But other than that. It's a ninety-nine point nine percent chance there's no one here after working hours. Um, another question came up with tractor trailers because of all the nightmares we've had down Bartlett. Um, is it possible for a tractor trailer to come here? Yes. Do they own any? No. Um, we tried to find the frequency of tractor trailers coming here. It's no different than where I work here um above Tavern in the Square. They would have a tractor trailer. It could actually go to either building. The biggest thing they drop off is a pallet full of water for their people to drink because they order it in a pallet. And sometimes a tractor trailer will drop it off and occasionally some supplies, whether it's pipes. Or some personal protective equipment. If they buy bulk, it'll come on a skid. And that's the only thing in their business that would arrive on a tractor trailer, no different than the neighborhood tavern. You know, receiving a a pallet full of beer for the tavern itself. So that's kind of how they operate. Because we're so just just under shock because of everything that happened down the road from us and and rightfully so with. You know, hundreds and hundreds of tractor trailers going up and down and through the neighborhoods. Um, this is kind of the opposite of that, uh, where at any given point during the day. You may have four or six people total on site. Because if these guys are on site, it means they're not working. And if they're not working, the Deveros are making money. So so just out of pure greed, they're off the site. Um, but is it possible they may have a dozen people to come up and train, which is what the admin building is for? Absolutely. And this building is just that. It's purely training. They'll show them new techniques in welding, new techniques in digging. They'll do videos. They do tests. Uh, show them about safety and so they'll come in here and and give them just prototype videos. And and there's a little bit of administrative office in this building. I believe there would be at any given point in time, two or three people. Um, and it's mostly their their maintenance people. There's going to be two offices. And a conference slash lunchroom um for them to take breaks. Um, I'm just trying to think of all the big issues that deal with groundwater. So. Oh, and and the entire site um will be curbed. Even though there's nothing out in the yards that would be deemed hazardous, other than a vehicle, which would be no different. Than than a car, you know, I guess a car could have an oil leak and so could one of their trucks, but they're not handling. Any contaminants at all in their operating procedures. The only thing that would be a a negative would be the oils and, you know, a brake fluid or or um. You know, winter wiper fluid, but that's all accounted for when I, when I was saying seven hundred, eight hundred gallons. That includes all that stuff. And they're all contained in in um spill containment, either cabinets or pallets. I think, is that everything, Greg?
Yeah, and we didn't touch the no touch.
Oh, yeah, and another thing, and it was just just to be conservative on it. You can see the lines out here. The green is the wetlands. The the blue is the no touch. And then the next one, and this is the no building. You can't have a building on that. But you could actually build beyond it with paving. In all cases, we didn't even pave beyond the building line. We just held everything back to be more conservative. To protect the groundwater and and nature. Um, we've got two infiltration systems. Um, one underground here and and one in the back. Um, but for the most part, it would be greener today than it is today. Once they move in because you'd actually have people looking at the monitoring wells and people paying attention. To to Lammy's because the owners of the site is responsible more than Lammy and and, you know, not that they're doing anything, but. If I own it, I'm going to be, I'm going to be making sure they don't. Are there questions?
All right, well, thank you, Mr. DiMar. Uh, so I just just want, and there was a lot of information. Um, some of it is relevant to the variance. A lot of it is going to be if you move forward with the special permit piece. So our responsibility tonight is to look at. Currently, Lammy Automotive has a variance for automotive use in groundwater one. You're seeking a variance for um automotive repairs in groundwater three.
Right.
Um, and you're. And comparing that to Lammy's. Um, they're relatively similar, right? We're talking about auto repairs of of vehicles of the Deveraux Company?
I would say the only exception I would make to that is we would probably do as much repairs in a year. That they would do in a day. So similar, yes, this is a very ancillary. Into the total operations of what Deveraux does. So it's it's a fraction and a really. Big fraction of what Lammy does. If they have twenty-seven vehicles, they change the oil twice a year. That's fifty-four. Um, maybe Lammy would do that many cars. Maybe it's a week. I I might have exaggerated that, but that's not our business, is the point.
Okay, thank you.
Heavy maintenance.
Okay, so now I am going to ask members of the board if they have questions, but you're on a reduced screen because of we're sharing the screen, but I'd like to leave it up there. So just give me a second to, okay, I see Paul. Excellent, Paul.
Hey, hey, Fran. Um, so I think just kind of piggybacking off of your point, right? So this property exists in both groundwater one and groundwater three. Um, and the part that we're looking at is for the automotive repair, right, which is. Not allowed in groundwater one without a variance, but is allowed in groundwater three. Right? But they've said, or at least based on the presentation, that their automotive repair is only going to exist in groundwater three.
Right?
So I guess part of the the, you know, the my original question is. If we restrict this use variance to only groundwater three, that would coexist with the current presentation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And and the only reason we're here, Paul, is because.
All right, that's Mr. DiMar. Sorry, I'm doing it for the minutes. Good, Mr. DiMar.
And the only reason we're here is because the land has both one and three in it, which is why we put everything in three just to be safer.
Okay, I guess I could, yeah, so just, could you just explain a little bit further? All the activities that you expect to occur within the Deveraux Administrative Building? And then all the activities you expect to occur within the Deveraux Maintenance Building? And then I have one more follow-up.
Okay, and and I think, Rick? Rick here? Yeah, Rick can go through that. He's the guy that does this every day and he's got all the scars and I think. To get into those details, I'll let him talk about it. I know a lot about it, but he knows. I'll say everything as far as I can see.
And Rick, if you could give me your full name in in relation to the project.
Um, uh, my name's Richard Gates. I am a supervisor for RJ Deveraux Corporation. I'm a project manager for this uh, this little project that's going on. Um, and uh. Really been in the industry for well over forty years, been working either as a sub or um as an employee uh for Deveraux. For close to forty years. Um, so both Paula and and Mario have a. Pretty good sense of what we do, but I'll I'll smooth the corners out for you a little bit so you understand it. So the administrative building, um, that is going to be training, um, computer training, hands-on training. Um, uh, safety training, first aid, that kind of thing. There is going to be some uh stock materials in the back of the building. There is no chemicals involved. They're all um fittings that we use out in the field to put plastic pipe together. Um, and steel pipe together. Um, so there's nothing that's going to um interrupt the groundwater one at all. Um, we're going to have a fork truck to take palletized um items and and store them in that last twenty percent of that building. Um, there is a loading dock um that's exists on the building, which is good for us. So when we have a a delivery. Um, we can back right up to that um and unload that way, or we come in a side door, which is a side uh overhead door. We can do that as well. So we're not um not going to be doing any kind of oil changes, anything disruptive to to groundwater one um on the administrative side or anywhere. Um, in the groundwater one district. We really don't have the need for that. Um, in the maintenance facility. Um, we install natural gas lines for our national grid and for ever source. And this facility will be basically going to be a um support um yard for all the crews. We have currently twenty-four crews in the area. So basically, all the small equipment they use. Um, which ranges from seven to, let's say, eleven, sometimes twelve. Engine drives, gas engine drives, um pieces of equipment from generators to ground pounders to plate whackers and power brooms. Um, and the like. Um, in addition to that, there are the equipment that puts the plastic pipe together. Um, all of that needs to get maintenance periodically. And that is primarily what's going to be um taken care of in this maintenance building. Uh, currently, we do not have. Um, a maintenance facility. What we have in Shrewsbury is woefully inadequate. Um, it's 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 terrible to work out. The guys don't have shelter. If they if they. Change oil or change the brakes on a on a pickup truck, which doesn't happen very often, they're out, they're out in the elements. So we have to go in and around the rain, that kind of thing. So in regards to the amount that we're going to be, um, you know, working on the vehicles, um, the. Runners vehicles, which are F five fifties and F three fifty dual-wheel wheel, flatbeds, um supervisors' trucks, which are pickup trucks. Um, we have a couple of um uh utility bodies uh for maintenance uh workers, the two maintenance workers and a couple of little welders. They're all the small trucks that aren't the big eighteen-wheelers that, you know, we've all heard the nightmares you, the people have gone through. Um, so they're all smaller vehicles and like DiMario led to. The way the company works currently is since we don't have facilities to take care of anything, and this would be the first in this area. Um, all the maintenance is done off-site. Um, a good majority of, we don't do anything heavy. We don't want to. It doesn't make sense for us to do that. So everything's going to be done in there is going to be all light service. And I don't really want to train. Uh, mechanics and equipment to start getting into transmissions and rear ends. It just does not make sense monetarily. Uh, it it, there's no reason for it. And basically, if you want to think about it, we're going to be a bit of a jiffy. Come in, go through it, make sure it'll pass inspection when the supervisor is there to be in a meeting, um, be part of training. Um, or if he has some time to do paperwork, um, we may change the oil, change tires on those vehicles and and. Even though this, I believe, was twenty-seven uh that I've counted, uh, realistically, maybe about fifteen, fourteen, fifteen of them will be. In the yard on a regular basis that would get um taken care of um in that regard. So um, when it really comes down to it, this is a support yard. Um, the only thing that I would say that you could equate to a contractor's yard, which is what everyone sees because. They have to file under a certain name is, you're going to see the the materials. And again, that still is support. Because we are restricted to eight hours in the field, uh, and that's due to the um. That's due to the the contract with the union and the gas company. Um, so we can't work any more than eight hours. So. We can't take a truck from Worcester, drive it all the way to this yard to pick up material, to drive all the way back to Worcester. We don't have enough time to do that and make money. So they're they're going to stop off at where we've been doing it for the last forty years and fifty years, and that's in Shrewsbury. You know, gravel facility out there. The same thing with our our crews down in Milton and all around. Currently, only about four crews that we would. Potentially support with some of the material in there. So therefore, that material truly is is just to support. Um, adjusting case factor. Truck breaks down, someone's close and it would be quicker and we might be able to put in a little more footage, make a little more money. We might come get material or drop off material. Um, all that material is going to be covered and and drained properly. I've asked Vito and um Dario. To, for lack of better terms, to over-engineer this. Um, we intend on being here for a long time. Um, we're not based out of Arkansas. We're not based out of uh, out of Atlanta. You're looking at the person that's going to answer the questions when the police chief, fire chief, uh, building inspector has an issue. I'm I'm the one going to answer the questions. I'm the one that's going to answer the phone. Um, we're going to do this right because we're going to be here a long time. The owner. Um, that's how he runs this company. He wants it, he wants it done correctly. And I'm I'm sure you've heard this numerous times from others. But uh, we're a family-owned business and there's multiple family members in through the administrative end of things. And uh, I can tell you that we're, we're going to do whatever we can do to make sure that, uh, you know, we can. Basically, run the company more efficiently because right now it is not run efficiently. And that's basically what I was brought in to do. Is to take over and uh pull enact right now a CMMS, which is a cloud-based maintenance management system. We're tracking all our equipments. We know when it breaks instead of going buying a new one, which is what happens far too often. Now we're repairing it. And once we get on top of that and. And once we get on top of that and train our people not to, you know, we can bring them in the administrative building and teach them how to not, you know, beat the crap out of everything. Then everything will last a little longer. And quite frankly, the amount of traffic going in and out was going to decrease because of that. And that's really the crux of what this facility is for. You're not going to be seeing tractor trailers with excavators and et cetera, big diggers and that kind of thing coming in and out of there. We just don't do that. All the crews out in the field are subcontracted. All the equipment out in the field is subcontracted. And that's because, generally speaking, in November, December is when the gas company starts taking away work from us because of the weather. And they don't want us digging in the streets, plates in the street, that kind of thing. And until March, it's a very slow period for us. So we were able to lay off people, which includes subcontractors, so it doesn't cost us anything. It's double-edged sword, because we hope that they come back in the spring, but that's the game we play and have to do it. And that's how we've been doing the, you know, our business is that way. So that's basically how we go about our operations. First thing in the morning, you're going to see seven to ten vehicles come in, gather stock, and they're going to disappear. There's going to be times when there's virtually very little activity in the yard. Between November and March, that slow time is when you're going to see trailers. We use landscape-type trailers to hold all the small equipment, those lawnmower-sized equipment and the stock that they use out in the street. Some crews have one trailer, one large trailer, some have two. Those trailers are reparked in the yard. There's no transmissions, there's no engines, there's nothing to leak out of them. That's what's going to be parked in the yard. So there's really very, very little when it comes to, in my mind, issues when it comes to that compared to, and I don't want to throw Lamy under the bus, but you know, compared to what he's doing, we're minimal compared to what he's doing. And just so everyone might be listening at home, we're not kicking Lamy out. Kevin's going to stay as long as he wants to. I know he's a valuable asset to the community. He's not going anywhere. We're not even raising a strike. He can stay there, work with him, I'm going to redo the drainage in and around his property, make it better, the access in there better. He can stay as long as he wants. And if and when he does leave, and I'm sure this will come up as a question, that that building more than likely is going to end up where the stock is going to end up or administrative. I have more than enough room in the maintenance building to take care of two hundred and fifty small engines in that maintenance building.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Paul, you had a follow up?
Yeah, just, so the maintenance building is where all of your auto repair work is going to take place. It's where all the chemicals are going to be. Will there be hydraulic lifts in the maintenance building?
We intend on doing is, they make now these mobile lifts. I don't know if you've seen them. They're electric and they're run by a computer. They're actually four posts that you roll around. And they pick up a variety of different vehicles. And they do have some hydraulics within them, pistons, obviously, to raise the vehicles up, but they're all self-contained. But there's just going to be, quite frankly, all we need is one. We don't really pick up anything very often. About half the time, my maintenance guys are just going to slide underneath the truck to change the oil. Take more time to put it up in the air than it will be to drop the oil out of it. There's nothing much to them. And all the trucks are tall. They're all four-wheel drive, so it's lighter underneath there. They'll just be happy to have a shelter and a concrete floor rather than a dirt floor that they're working on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, other members of the board? Just rolling back and forth. Okay. When we go to staff, then Bob, have anything to add and or question?
I really don't have anything to add. It's pretty complete. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be sure. Okay, so I do want to, before I open it up, Fred, if you want to go to the Groundwater Advisory, they have quite a list of conditions that they're concerned with, if you could just address those.
Sure, thank you. Because it's a use variance, the committee did vote for in favor and one opposed to granting the use, recommending approval of the use variance, but wanted to specify some conditions so that it wasn't just a complete carte blanche, you can do whatever you need to in automotive repair in this section. The committee asked me to put together a letter. And I did indicate in the first condition that they should submit the location, the type of all the storage containers or the various materials that they are going to have on site. One of the questions that I had during the groundwater meeting was the, wasn't sure if the list that came with the application was complete. I heard Dario say tonight that there's about seven hundred gallons, which is about what was listed on the application. I wanted to give them an opportunity to expand, because I only saw spoils there. I didn't see brake fluids or antifreeze or some other materials that might be used on site. And I wanted to make sure that that was, if the list that came with the application is complete and the board decides to grant the variance, that list should be made. The variant should limit their application to what's in that list. If it's not, then we need to get that list somehow and you know, put some containment on it, on the amount of chemicals and how they're stored. The committee was happy to hear that all the chemicals would be stored within the maintenance building, which is in the groundwater three area, and recommended that that also be a condition. One of the items that came up during the groundwater meeting was, in the application, they indicated they were going to be responsible for making sure that any ongoing monitoring and maintenance on the groundwater quality issues on that site were taken care of. They would be their responsibility. And the groundwater committee thought that the status report from a licensed site professional on what is left to be done out there, what's been done, any and all contamination that's been on the site should be evaluated and a report be submitted so that we can get a handle on if there is anything outstanding. I believe there may not be anything outstanding anymore, that the DEP may have closed out that issue, but we wanted to see a report from a licensed site professional kind of verifying all that, because the records are a little bit old and not all complete here at the town hall. We talked about the maintenance building having all the chemicals and storage within that building. The committee also wanted to have the variance issued for this applicant only, not quite sure about the legal ramifications of that, if we can do that with a variance or not. But we wanted to narrowly approve the variance if it's done, so that it is only applicable for this user. And if someone else comes along, they would have to tell us what they're going to have. The the next couple of conditions in my letter are basically a restatement of what's in the zoning bylaw in terms of requirements for a special permit in a groundwater three area. The list, the first one, number five, is really what's required for an application to be submitted for that special permit. What's included, the list of chemicals, description of the potentially toxic or hazardous materials, MSDS sheets, all of that information, some of which came in. And like I said before, if that list isn't complete, I want to give them an opportunity to tell us everything that they're going to have. And I'm seeing stuff on the screen that I don't recall seeing in the application, so I'm guessing that there's more. Number six talks about the requirements of the drainage system and the imperviousness and water quality issues. If the variance is granted, we want to make sure that this is still submitted. It's a little bit more extensive. That's what's just required for a site plan approval. And I want to make sure that this is what they're going for. It is what we talked about at the groundwater committee, a fully developed, current drainage system in conformance with all local rules and regulations, as well as the state and federal regulations. But again, if the variance is granted and it's not specified, there's an opportunity for something less to be installed. And we wanted to make sure that was clear. And the last condition is that the it's the other section in the zoning bylaw that talks about a special permit in industrial and commercial uses and no onsite disposals, any material. Again, the applicant has indicated that they don't plan to have any processes that would discharge anything to the ground. There are limits on the size of the septic system. It's a pretty good-sized lot. I don't imagine they'll have any problems meeting those requirements, but they are stated in the letter, because we don't want to see a variance get granted without limits.
Thank you, Fred. Attorney Deveraux?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to indicate that we did, we were before the groundwater advisory committee and we assured them at that committee hearing that we intend to go back to the groundwater advisory committee to answer some of these questions. As you'll see, there's additional information about the chemicals. And before we go to the planning board in order to get the special, planning board special permit, if this board grants the variance. So I just wanted to confirm that we fully intend to go back to the groundwater advisory committee prior to going to the planning board.
Thank you. Speaking of the groundwater advisory, we did receive a letter, an email from, I assume it's a resident, I don't have her address, from Janine Callahan that was shared with the groundwater advisory committee prior to their meeting, and then she was forwarding it on to us as well. I'm going to assume that the questions were reviewed and discussed at groundwater, and some of them are addressed in the recommendations. I do have a question, though, that comes up in this that, and I noticed in the application that there is going to be a raising of a building in groundwater one. And so when a building is raised and rebuilt, is other soil testings required and or recommended, Fred, on the soil?
I guess it depends on what was going on inside the building. Typically, the applicant's financial institution requires a clean twenty-one E before they'll give funding and expect that that would be done in accordance with this site.
Okay, and I just want to say that Mr. Damar just raised his hands and nothing is being raised, but I'm just reading it out of the narrative.
Right, but we're not raising a building is the whole point. We're just going to redo the facade and upgrade materials. We're not increasing the footprint at all.
Okay, all right. So on page two of the narrative, the applicant proposes to raise a small existing building. So I just need clarification then.
We're renovating, not raising. I mean, we're just.
Okay, all right, timeout, because we're the note taker. Attorney Deveraux?
Thank you. There is a small building that's going to be demolished that is in pretty rough shape right now. Rick, do you want to explain that a little bit?
And if you could put up the site again for us, please. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gates.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, right now, there's a small storage building. It's, according to Kevin, Lamy, there's nothing in it. It's right in the middle of where one of the islands would be going on the site. I don't know if it's depicted on there, but it's a very small building, does not have a basement to it, has no electricity in it. Yeah, the existing, yep, that one right there. Doesn't have any electricity to it, has no facilities to it at all. It's just a little storage facility. They might have, I think, might have kept like a backhoe or a piece of equipment in there for the snow or something, because it's it's not, it's really nondescript and it's really in the way for us. We don't really need it. We're not, we don't want to rebuild it. We don't need it. We've got more than enough room to do what we have to do for the next couple of decades, quite frankly.
Thank you very much. Okay. Other members of the board? Just give me one second to scroll through. Paul?
Yes, I guess this is just in reference to what number four on the groundwater committee letter for the use variance should be issued to this applicant only. So I don't think that that's necessarily allowed for variances. So typically, variances can have certain conditions to it, but it being connected to an owner that's requesting the variance is not one of them. We could potentially request a timeframe for a use variance, because as you know, if we do grant this use variance, it is good in perpetuity, right? But you can, by state statute, put a timeframe on the length of the use variance. So if you say that there's a ten-year period that you can use a piece of land for, you know, what they're coming in front of us for, after ten years, they would need to almost reapply to have that variance done over. And then, so that was just for number four. And then I think for number five, so Fred, is my understanding in reading this letter that the groundwater advisory committee did not have a complete list of all chemicals, pesticides, fuels, and other potentially toxic and hazardous materials to be stored on site? And then they did not have a description of potential toxics or hazardous wastes or any evidence of approval? So that was just like, these are conditions that like, still have not been provided to groundwater for them to review?
What the application included was a list of chemicals. And when I reviewed the list, it occurred to me that there may be more items that they would need based upon the way they described their use. And so I wanted to give them an opportunity to expand that list. And the committee was comfortable with recommending approval with the other conditions that were that were already discussed, in that mainly being that everything was going to be housed, all chemicals and their storage containment would be in the groundwater three area in the maintenance building. And so they wanted, but they wanted to make sure a complete list was submitted in the future, and then they would have a chance to review it and make recommendations or work with the applicant to modify his plan to make sure the containment was all there when the site plan was going forward. But because that it wasn't clear when the application was made that everything was going to be in the maintenance building, and that was specified at the meeting, they felt pretty comfortable recommending approval. In terms of condition number four, where it talks about the variance should be issued to this applicant only, it may be that if the condition that all toxic or hazardous material or anything that's on site is stored within the maintenance building and not within the groundwater area one, that may be enough to limit it to anybody else coming in there and having any toxic or hazardous materials in the groundwater area one beyond what's allowed in Mr. Lamy's building or the building that Mr. Lamy occupies. So it may not be as important to have that in there. And I know there are some legal concerns about issuing it to the applicant. So that may be kind of taken care of if in the other conditions.
Thank you. Brad, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, Madam Chair, yes, just a, I know these applicants are acting in good faith. However, I would love to see the exact list of chemicals being put on the premises, because it is groundwater one before I personally want to make a decision. That's just my input. I want to know exactly what's going on, and I want our town engineer to know what's happening, what's going on on that property before we make a decision.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Damar?
Yeah, our initial list, and I don't have the exact amount that we submitted, was, it was a big list, but then when we were asked, well, what about stuff that you use to clean the bathroom and other stuff? We had like sixteen-ounce or eight-ounce containers of different winter wiper fluid or something. So we put everything we could imagine on the next list, not that the first one was trying to avoid it, but and you can see part of the list here, where we'll have twenty-four sixteen-ounce containers of this grease or, you know, the Armor All, we'll have twenty-three twenty-eight-ounce containers of that. And all this stuff in the list that wasn't on there, and shame on us for not having every single piece on there. They're all stored in a cabinet that's secure, but they're all things that come in a little box. And I don't think there's a container there that's bigger than a gallon, yet we do have them, you know, the winter wiper fluid, twenty-four one-gallon containers of that. Some of that wasn't on the original list. Some of that wasn't on the original list, not with any intent to deceive, but when they said everything, then we went back to, all right, let's get everything, including, you know, the stuff we use to clean the toilets. And, and so we put every single thing we could find, and that's what totaled up to the 772 gallons. But Fred was pretty clear about, we need to see everything. And this list that's in front of you is everything with the exact amounts and the containers they're stored in, and you can have it tomorrow, but it's not what was submitted initially. And that was our mistake not to go down to, again, you know, all-purpose cleaner. There's, there's, you know-
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to ask for Windex. I, I, I understand you guys are acting in good faith, but there were some things on the list that our town engineer did not see prior. And it's not looking for Windex or, or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure before we make a decision that our town engineer has access to all of these details. And, and we, we rely on our town engineer heavily before we make a decision. And so there's some things that could be Windex, it could be, you know, carpet cleaner. I don't know, but just making sure that our town engineer and our, and our building inspector has access to everything before they make a recommendation.
Great, thank you.
And then we'll make the decision based on that.
Other members of the board? I'm just scrolling through. Oh, one second. Scrolling through with that deck? I'm sorry.
I have a question for the applicant. This maintenance building, what kind of floor drains will you have? And where will they be connected to? Is there a tight tank that's going to collect all the late material? It melts off these trucks, or if they're washed and so forth? And, or is it going into the recharge area?
Mr. DeMar?
Yeah, and I can leave that up to Vito, but yes, there's a tight tank, to answer your question, inside the building.
So all the flow drains will go into the tight tank?
Yes, anywhere where there could possibly be a spill inside the building, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Suzie?
Hi. If we do approve the list of the chemicals and everything from the groundwater approves it and everything, who, who checks up on it, like, once they start business? Is there, do we have a system in place for that? Or this is just a general question for, I guess, Bob and the board members?
I think it's Fred, maybe.
And Fred?
Fred would answer the question, I think.
Well, what happens is if you approve the variance, the recommendation is that we have a specific list of chemicals, all chemicals, and that is included in the approval, along with verification that there's proper containment for all of the chemicals on site. And then, once it goes into the variance, and then if there's a site plan approval and a plan approved, that becomes zoning issue. And then, at the time of the building application, building permit application, the building inspector and I would confer and make sure that what's being proposed at the building permit application is what was approved by the ZBA and the, and the site plan. And then, when the ASBIL plan is prepared, which is always required, once the building is ready to be occupied, we then do a check to see that the stuff inside the building matches what was proposed to be inside the building at the time. But to answer your, your question more directly is, it's Bob. As the zoning enforcement officer, he enforces the zoning bylaw as well as the special permits or variances that are, that are granted, because those become zoning issues. And if they're not adhered to, then it's a, technically, it's a zoning violation. And Bob can correct me if I'm wrong here on that.
Suzie, are you all set?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because when we were talking about the list, and then do we have the complete list? And, you know, I was just wondering, like, how do we know that that is the complete, complete list? Once we get it, if everything's granted, when things get going, I was just, that process.
Thank you. Okay, and I do believe that, to both Brad's point and I think Attorney Deveraux earlier, that this is not the last stop, this is the first stop. The next one would be in front of the planning board for the special permit with site plan approval. And at that level, again, they're going to have to bring this up because it's all part of the site plan and our approval. So there will be another check on that. Okay, I'm just scrolling back through. I don't see you, just speak up, but, oh, Bob.
Yeah, I've just got a quick question. I didn't read the entire list of all the chemicals. Are you folks planning on having any DEF fluid on, on hand, which is diesel emission fluid?
Yes, we will, we'll be having probably a pallet load of DEF that will be over containment, containment tank, and stored over in the corner. I'm not exactly sure where we're going to, where we designated it. Dario might remember, but yeah, right there. The two and a half gallon containers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. No one has any questions at the moment. I do want to just, I can come back. This is a public hearing. If there are members in the audience who wish to speak, just please raise your hand, and once recognized, state your name. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to come back. Bob, Mr. DeMar, do you have your hand up? Or is that, there's a little green arrow?
No, I don't have my hand up, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. Okay, so board members or staff, any additional questions or concerns? There were none in the audience? Fred? Oh, you muted.
How about now? Good? All right, sorry about that. I just want to clarify that the condition or the recommendation from the groundwater committee that all the toxic or hazardous materials be stored within the maintenance building is still applicable even if the list changes.
Thank you. And do we, I know that, again, in the narrative, it references that vehicles will be parked for periods of time in groundwater one as they either wait for their turn in the maintenance shed or that they're training. That is not an issue. That's, I just want to confirm that that's not a concern of ours. We have parking lots in groundwater one, right?
I'm assuming that's directed to me, and it is not a concern as long as the drainage system is designed in accordance with all the local and current state regulations requiring water quality separators before anything goes, gets discharged to the detention basin or any infiltration. So, and there's an operation and maintenance plan that goes with that. So it's basically just a parking lot, which we have in groundwater area ones across town in various locations.
And any concerns related to that would be addressed should they move forward to the planning process?
There'd be part of the site plan, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, following up, Madam Chair?
Yes, Brad.
Mr. Lich, Mr. Lichfield, if you don't mind just mentioning that, that you want the chemicals, the maintenance on groundwater three, not on groundwater one. I just want that for the minutes, moving forward, please.
Did you get that, Michelle? She's on minutes taker. Thank you, Brad. Okay. All right, one more sweep of the audience, and then nothing. If there are no other questions, concerns, or comments during your motion.
I have a question.
Oh, wait, you have a question? Was that Dick Rand?
Yes, I have a question for the developer. Where was this tight tank? We've had other buildings, maintenance buildings in town where they say they're going to have a tight tank, and we can never find it. Engineers couldn't find it. It's not on this plan, is it?
Yeah, so I'm going to let Vito speak to that, because Vito's going to be putting in the tight tank. He's our, our civil engineer.
Thank you.
Vito Clono with Clonestone Engineering. So if they have any floor drains in that building, which they will need to have, would put a tight tank. We haven't shown it on the plan yet. We part of the final design. But it would be located outside the building in one of the paved parking areas that are, so it'd be readily accessible. There'd be covers to grade so everyone would know where it was. And they would have a float alarms in it, so whenever that got to its capacity, an alarm would go off indicating that it needed to be cleaned out. But they would be required as, you know, as part of the building permit process, just for those flood drains inside the building.
Okay, and Bob, you'd require that on the building permit, right?
Yeah, the, the requirements for a floor drain in a tight tank, it typically comes involved with the plumbing code, which is one of the things we look at. Basically, any structure built to take a vehicle with a license plate, basically, is required to have some sort of a floor drain with a containment system with an oil, water, and gas separator.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Hey, Brad. So I, I just, I guess for me, I would feel more comfortable with a more detailed sort of, I mean, typically, when we make these types of decisions, you know, we rely on groundwater to advise us of the plans and the procedures and how, you know, certain companies or, you know, variances are going to proceed. And I kind of am somewhat uncomfortable with the way that this groundwater letter is written in the respect that it's somewhat open-ended. And I don't necessarily, just don't, it's not that I don't believe that the applicant is not going to provide all the information or do everything they say that they are. But typically, our decisions, right, would be based off of a letter, right? That would have plenty of detail to it from, you know, the groundwater advisory committee. And I just don't see some of that level of detail, I guess, in the current letter. And, I mean, I guess I would prefer that we potentially continue this hearing and have them go back to groundwater to provide all the documents, and then just listen to the, the remaining portion at our next meeting. But I don't know how anyone else feels about this.
Well, I mean, my first thought is that we, we often have special permits for groundwater protection. This is, I, I don't recall a variance for ground, I mean, variance for groundwater is just more specific. And again, I think the oversight at the special permit level is where they're going to, you know, definitely get down to that. But, I mean, I don't know. It depends on how other people feel.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, I, I completely agree. I, I want to make sure that our town engineer is completely confident with what is going on the property. And I would also recommend a continuance, just to make sure we have all of our details in front of us.
Either Fred, Dick, or Mark. Curious as to what, Dick, I'm sorry.
Okay, just to say, I agree with Paul and Brad. I think we ought to continue until we have all the information.
If that is the desire of the ZBA, I can ask the groundwater committee to reschedule a meeting and have the applicant submit the detailed, the more detailed list, the stuff that's on the screen, I don't believe was part of the original application. And we'd like to get the containment, details on where the stuff is going to be contained within the building and what kind of cabinets there are. That's certainly information that's important. I would like to have the ZBA clarify whether or not they're looking for a more detailed site plan, because what was submitted with the application for the use variance was not a detailed site plan. There was no drainage analysis. There was no design for the stormwater system. That is an appropriate thing for the site plan, but just need clarification. And I imagine the applicant would like that clarification as well, is exactly what they need to present to go back to the groundwater committee to then get a proper recommendation for the ZBA. So happy to have them do that. Just need to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
With this, if we requested, I'm sorry, Kathy?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, the, the details, I mean, this is, this is very similar to One Lyman Street, where the variance first, the, the request for a use variance first came to the zoning board of appeals, because that's a property that's also partially in groundwater area one. That particular applicant did have a more developed site plan, but, but that's not required as part of this, as, as part of a use variance application. So, I mean, I think it's certainly appropriate, as Fred was explaining, about asking for, you know, for this list that's, that's proposed here tonight, to go back to Fred, to go back to the groundwater advisory committee. But really, any, any details in a site plan is, is something that, that needs, you know, that's really their next step that would be worked out with the planning board. And, and I just wanted to point out one other thing. Earlier, Paul had talked about the, the variance, you know, running with the land. And that is a Massachusetts general law regulation that, that a variance runs with the land, not with the owner.
You just froze.
Yeah, we lost her.
Geez, and she was getting right to the cliffhanger.
Right? We're into the meat of the point. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think what she was trying to say was Paul was correct about everything.
Tune in next week.
Don't even tell her how her face froze.
Um, so I, I-
So that point on hold. Her explanation about the idea of requesting a site plan at this stage is, you know, it's something they're going to have to do if they get to the next step. They're looking to take this step first. I don't know whether our meeting and the planning boards will coincide where it will be prepared anyway. But while we wait for, oh, Paul, oh, you did raise your hand. Sorry.
I, I guess, I guess what I'll say is, you know, a site plan may not be required, but, you know, just, and I'll say, you know, the difference between One Lyman and this, you know, case is, you know, One Lyman was storing cable wires, right? Where they have, are basically doing an automotive repair sort of facility here. So there's a big difference in terms of, you know, the, the type of facility that it is. And I think that, you know, at least for me, I just want to make sure that we have a full accounting of everything in terms of the, the chemicals and just a plan for the storage before the, you know, ZBA, the Special Permit and Grandity Authority, makes a decision for the variance, right? So that we have the underground stores, the tight tank, all that stuff is sort of lined up for us to make a decision, so that there's no ambiguity as this proceeds down, down the road, if, if it may.
That makes, it makes sense. So since three people have voiced that opinion, and we can, if we are going to make a motion to continue to our next hearing, we'll have time for Kathy to finish her statement. So let me just, when is our next, our next meeting would be? The 26th of October? So before we, before I entertain a motion, does the applicant have anything? Any concerns with a continuance to our October 26th meeting, to get that clarified?
Can I just speak? I'm not sure. What's your meeting after Nova?
Can I just speak, I'm not sure, what's your meeting after November, October 26th? In case we don't have enough time to get all this done by then.
Okay, so at this point, we're just asking for a complete list of the chemicals, I believe, before we can make our final decision, is that correct, Paul? Right, that's what we're referencing?
Just, yeah, I mean, I guess I would just reference the section five of the groundwater list in which they are going in front of the groundwater advisory committee with the complete list of chemicals, pesticide fuels, you know, potentially toxic hazardous materials, to the description of potentially toxic hazardous materials, waste to be generated, including storage and disposal methods. You know, so I think that that's the section that we just want to have, I think they, you know, in sort of watching the groundwater committee meeting, it was sort of left open-ended and I understand that that, you know, in theory will be taken care of in terms of the site plan, but I just would feel more comfortable if that was just, you know, dotted with an I and crossed with a T before we, as the, you know, SP, G A, make that decision.
I guess I'm okay with the, with the continuance for the chemicals, the issue I have is we're sort of between a rock and a hard place on the site plan because to the extent that you want to see exact locations of a tight tank or any other site plan requirements, my issue is that if we show you, it becomes part of your decision and then it changes when we go to the planning board, we, you know, we then potentially have to come back. And it's just a lot of time and so I get, I understand the chemical issue. I'm just trying to understand how much detail you want on a site plan.
Okay, so I think what Paul's saying is that it's number five on the groundwater advisory recommendations and it's, we're not talking about a site plan now. It's a complete list of the chemicals where they'll be stored within the building, to Fred's point, and Kathy is just telling me everybody at town hall is frozen. Can you call, see each other? Oh, yes, sorry. So we're winging, oh, so, oh, there's Bob's not in the office.
Madam Chair, if I may, the town hall internet service has been dicey at best for the past few days. And I suspect that Fred and Kathy's internet service has basically crashed. Probably available by phone, I'm working, I'm out of my house, so I don't have that current issue.
Okay, all right, so, the board, do we want to see, I think Fred was referencing that if we get a full list of all the chemicals and where they're stored within the building in groundwater three, is what we're asking for before we can complete our decision process for use variance. Because that's the key issue with this use is the chemicals that they're going to store even in that general area. All right.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that classification, I'm fine with that too, thank you.
All right, so then October 26th is our next date or November 23rd?
Okay.
And so you're comfortable with October 26th?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to continue the hearing to October 26th at 6:00 P M?
I make a motion to continue the hearing to October 26th at 6:00 P M?
Is that Dick seconded?
Yes.
So there's no meditator, okay. So all those in favor of continuing this hearing until that date, roll call, Paul?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And Fran, aye. Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to say the public hearing is closed.
Well, we just continued it, right?
Oh, that's right, we didn't, we did, oh, dodged that one, thank you, Paul.
They get chopped next month.
Yeah, all right, so, so I guess we're going to wing this without Kathy and Fred, so Bob, I hope you're taking good notes because.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be taking notes, I'll leave my microphone on. Just go slow when you do the presenting the motions and the seconds and the.
Okay, all right, those I can take notes for, it's everything else I can't. All right, so if we go back to 9102 Shops Way.
And you had to get, you had to get rid of the sharing of the screen.
Do you want, oh, it went away, yeah, once he went away, it went away, okay. All right, so, all right, so here we go, all right, it's, there we are, all right, sorry. Okay, 9102 Shops Way. Concerns, questions, discussion, Paul?
I guess I'll go first, I really have no issues with this. You know, this is basically replacing what the sign that's coming there, it's an increase of 18 square feet on, you know, a business that, or a sign that would literally have zero impact on any sort of public good. There are already signs there within the entire district. I feel like we do this every other quarter, but I have no issues with these signs.
I think we're going to have to look at our signage in the retail section because it does seem like we're always making it bigger, longer, wider. Brad?
Yeah, I mean, same thing, I mean, we've talked about this with Lexus as well, they're just rebranding, just redoing some stuff and that was one of my questions was, what were you adding an additional sign, you're replacing it, and so they're just, they're just rebranding.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not a fan of fourth plate green chocolate.
So, I have no issue.
Yeah. All right, Suzie?
It does match that they also have the pharmacy labeled in marketplace too, so it's not like, it's like a picture and then it's going to be the only words, like there are words labeling on the, on the rest of the building too.
Gives a balance, yeah. Okay, all right, well, there is no other discussion, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we, being that we don't know the exact square footage that they're currently qualified for, I think we can frame it as an increase of 20 square feet to the current sign allowance allotment for the, for the Wegmans at the property at 9102 Shops Way. And, and grant them that variance for an increase of the 20 square feet.
We say on the left-hand side of the building?
I would, I don't think it, I don't think it's going to matter because next week they may shuffle shop signs around. I don't think we have to be that specific. I would be interested in finding out if the variance is for just simply a certain number of square feet. I would hope that eventually we can clean this up maybe and find out how many square feet we really have there, but so, as I say, in the meantime, for business.
I think I wrote it, I hope I wrote it down correctly, 57.3 to 74.3.
75.
Yeah, I'd give them the 20 feet just for a little leeway, but that's only the one sign. And I imagine their variance might be for all three signs because of the, otherwise they wouldn't be here because it's 100 square feet total.
Correct.
But, Bob?
Just to clarify, the variance is for allowing the maximum allowed square footage of all the signs
Right.
to be increased by 20, it's not just this one particular sign. The square footage talks about all the signs on the building. And the variance would be for adding 20 feet to the aggregate allowed.
Right, and that's how I would phrase it and just leave it simply that.
Makes sense, okay. All right, so that was a motion made by Mark and did I hear a second? Dick is seconded, okay, so on a roll call, Mark?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Thank you. Okay, on to the pool people. I dreamt to say I thought she did a fabulous job reading, I actually, she's a very good reader. I mean, I was, yeah, some people just, I mean, I rambled, I mean, I just thought she did a very nice job.
Shall I?
And researcher.
Yes.
I'm very sympathetic that I feel they were sold a bill of goods in that they were given a 1.3 acre piece of property, plenty of room for a pool, had every intention of getting it. From what I remember of this property, you know, originally there was some weird subdivision into multiples and we kind of, it got squeezed back to only cutting it into two pieces. And, and the 100% coverage was kind of a, okay, take everything off the house, make sure it all goes into recharge and let's, you know, get everything we can off the, you know, from the water that falls on this lot. Giving them the 800 square feet of non-recharge, you know, I, I feel that that's, you know, a small percentage of the 56,000 square feet of the property, it's one seventieth. And as I say, I, I guess I'm comfortable limiting it to 800 square feet and then say, and essentially having their pool deck around it to be part of the recharge because it will be caught and sent back into the groundwater. The only problem I guess I see is if something went wrong, you know, okay, obviously if we get 10 inches of rain, it's going to overflow the pool. If the pool cracks, you're going to get all the pool draining into the groundwater. There are a lot of things that can go wrong, but then there are a lot of things that could go wrong on the 80,000 square foot property next door if they put in a pool. And I just don't see a good reason to penalize these people because, because of slightly smaller property. That, that's where I'm, I'm thinking.
Thanks, Mark, Paul?
I guess I would agree with Mark's sentiment about, you know, almost it being a, this egregious penalty of 100% of recharge. You know, I think in going back to the minutes for the groundwater from five years ago and the ZBA minutes, because you guys did obviously grant a variance for the original property, it seems like there were some issues with that current landowner in terms of, well, A, showing up to the meetings. And so having 700 square feet of non-recharged pool water on a 56,000 square foot property is really not, is only 2% to Mark's point. When in any other property, they could put upwards of 12,000 square feet of unrechargeable land, right? Or I should say, 8,400 square feet, given the size of the lot, because it's 15% of the 56,000. And really what they're looking for is the, just the pool and we can put a condition in that says all of your patios, your sheds, everything else needs to be recharged, right, because you either recharge your water or it's runoff. So, and the fact that it's a pool away from the street, away from the driveway, right, that should be a pretty simple solution for them, even considering the fact that their driveway apparently is also charged into a side well. So, I don't have an issue with decree, I mean, basically, the way I viewed it is we're basically adjusting the variance from when the ZBA granted the original landowner for that one condition where instead of it being 100% recharge, you know, we can make it whatever, 98% and then they would be allowed to put the pool, but I'll leave that to, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily the case, but you know, rather than granting a full variance that they have access now to 8,400 square feet or whatever, but, so I guess, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Dick?
I agree with Paul and Mark. You know, the landowner five years ago would have done anything to get his separate lot and he agreed to anything and 100% was a reasonable thing to do at the time, but I can see it's a reasonable accommodation to let them have the pool.
There you go, all right. Okay, and again, I mean, 2% is not a lot. And even if the neighbor, I mean, because the one argument was if you put the two lots together, you could have, you know, 12,700 and something, but it's still, this is not even close to that, it's like 9% instead of 15%. Yeah, I don't, yeah.
And also, we saw the letters, so there were no objections from the butters as well. So, I, I, I think, I like to take that into account as far as, okay, the neighbors, the butters, they don't have an issue with the pool and granted that our stipulations, our conditions from 2017, I forget what year, but I don't have any objections.
Well, Fred, now that you're back on a point that Paul made and wondering whether this, if, if we did grant the variance, could we grant it with a percentage of impervious cover? So that it's just not a wide open, yes, you can now have because we don't want them, I guess we, we're not saying we're going to grant them 50% impervious cover. We're saying that you can have this 2%ish.
Well, you can do whatever you want, you're the ZBA.
Totally true.
How often do you hear that, huh? Because the groundwater committee didn't recommend approving the variance, I didn't put anything in there about how to go about it. So, what the applicants offered was recharging everything except for the pool. But there's no design, so I would need to see that design and approve it before they actually got their building permit, if that's the case. You've closed the hearing, so we can't ask for more information at this point, so a condition, if you want to limit it to allowing the pool to not be recharged, but everything else, and that way, the 100% recharge of the rest of the lot still carries forward, so if ever they want to build a shed or a tennis court or something else, they'd have to find a way to recharge that.
Okay, so that's interesting, so, so how would we assure that the pool does not become an Olympic-sized pool if we say that they were granting a variance for the pool, it has to be for a square footage or a percentage and, and Mark always gives leeway, so maybe we should think of that way. I mean, you know, I'm rounding up, rounding up instead of rounding down.
The application, the application did, sorry, if you want to go ahead, Paul, go ahead, sorry about that.
No, 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 correct.
I was going to say, the application did indicate that the surface area of the pool was around 700 square feet. You wanted to give them that plus a little bit extra just in case they end up with a slightly different shape, but not an Olympic-sized pool, although Olympic-sized pools should actually be inside of a building so you can train all year, but.
That solves that issue, all right, Mark, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, um, I, you know, I have no problem if you want to call it a percentage, but if we want to give them, either way it works. You know, if Bob had an enforcement preference of 800 square feet versus 1.5% or whatever it comes down to, I think he'd just have to get out his calculator and figure out what the number is anyway. I just figured 800 was easier to enforce.
Right, and I agree, and that's what it's, when Paul was speaking, so this way here, it is just the pool, we're going to give them a little bit of leeway so that in case the design is different or whatever. so that in case the design is different or whatever, I mean, I don't know anything about the leak pools. So if everyone is in agreement with that, Paul?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, we're all trying to get to the same point or the same spot, right? It's just how we sort of, so like, are we granting like a new variance to say, yes, they can have whatever, 1,000 square feet, or are we literally just adjusting the ZBA variance from five, because, I mean, the way I've read this case is that that ZBA variance is the reason why they are in front of us today, because there is that stipulation within that variance. That was a recommendation from the groundwater committee that said you need 100% recharge, right? So if you, if we adjust that one stipulation from 100% to 98%, which is say 1,000 square feet, right? They could then, in theory, put that pool in. Right? Or have, or have, so I mean, we're getting to the same spot. I just don't know what's the easiest way to do it. Or, or if Bob has any opinion on terms of like how he can enforce that.
Right, I don't think we can amend it. I don't think we can amend a, a, a previous variance. This is, it's a new variance, I think, is how I would look at it. Suzie? Suzie, go.
I just wanted to make sure that we're only, the problem was the recharging and not that it was chlorinated or saltwater and if it overflowed or everything, right? It's just, just the, the recharging, right? In the surface area.
My suggestion would be you allow them some relief from the original variance to include in-ground pool to be installed without recharging the specific area allotted to the pool itself. And if you want to put a number of 750 square feet or some number associated with that, it wouldn't go too big because then, you know, there could be other stuff. But a reasonable flexibility on the size and shape of the pool does seem appropriate. They offer to recharge the patio, the pavilion, whatever the other, there was another accessory impervious area. Still like to see all that accomplished and then any future impervious cover would also be recharged. So however you need to wear that to make yourselves comfortable, I guess would be the way to go.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, so with all that, do I hear a motion?
I would, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mark.
I would like to make a motion to to grant a variance to our, I guess, to our earlier decision to allow a 800 square foot non-recharged area for the purpose of building a swimming pool on the property at 313 Brigham Street?
Do we need to say anything about everything else having to be recharged, like the patio? Or that's just a given, they would have to come back?
I, I guess I assume that our, otherwise our previous decision, our, our previous grant of variance stands.
Right, okay, perfect, okay. All right, so this is a grant of areas for a non-rechargeable area of no more than 800 square feet for an in-ground swimming pool. And I think Dick jumped out a second?
He did, yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so on a roll call, oh, any other discussion? Hearing none on a roll call, Mark?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Fran, I. Okay, all right, oh, remember, this one is we're continuing the last one, so we're done with that. I don't know if Kathy's actually on with us, I can see her name, but I don't hear her and I see Michelle's back, so Bob, you don't have to take minutes anymore, hopefully.
Well, you don't get to look at my face, but I'm here.
Oh, we did, we did from Frozen for about 30 seconds, so that was more than enough.
All you can do is turn your video back on, Kath.
No, it's, we're having a little issue. Jim's trying to solve it, but so I'm assuming, you know, I know I can get this from Michelle and Bob, but you, I'm assuming you approved the Wegmans variance?
We approved the Wegmans variance, yes.
And you continued the
Lamy property, Bartlett Street. To October 26th. All right.
And Kathy, the Wegmans was just an approval of 20 extra square feet. It'd be nice if we knew the total square footage and I would have no no objection, I don't think the board would have an objection if the whole thing was later summarized as just the total square footage. But
Okay.
But that's what we had.
Okay, we'll, we'll look for those, for those details in the, in the file tomorrow. And, and if that's okay with everyone, I'll just add that in, what, what the existing square footage is today.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, Kathy?
Yeah?
Kathy, what I, I mean, what I have here is they're at 57.3 and they're increasing to 74.3. So that's, like, like Mark said, 20, 20 square foot.
Yeah, okay.
But those are the numbers I wrote down.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so on to new business. I have to say that, oh, Fred?
I'm sorry, because I, I missed it. I gotta know, what did you tell the applicants for 200 Bartlett Street that they need to come back to do?
They need to have a complete list of all the chemicals and locations of storage in the maintenance building, specific locations within the maintenance.
So no fully designed drainage system, just the chemicals and the storage and the type of thing?
Right, attorney Deveraux said that, did make the point that she, they could present it on a plan to us and then go before the planning board and have to then do a whole new plan because that would be, you know, they would have, you know, have other issues, so that was all we wanted.
Okay.
So that information is to go to, to Fred, to the, and have them go back before the groundwater advisory committee before your October meeting?
26th, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if you guys remember, last month, I had hoped that we were going to start meeting in person come September because I just longed for that. But as luck would have it, and the Delta variant and all that good stuff, it looks like we're gonna be remote for a while. But I am happy to say that I am more than happy to hand this back off. It's different than doing it in person, being chair, and it has its different challenges. But I am wearing my scruffy slippers, which is, I guess, one of the perks. But anyway, so it is time, and it is September, this is normally, you know, in the May and June timeframe. But because of COVID last year, Brad did hang on through September and then I took over in September. So maybe we'll work our way back closer to the spring. But for the last time, I would like to entertain a motion nomination for somebody to replace me in this fabulous position.
I nominate.
I'm sorry, that was Mark.
I would like to nominate Dick Rand as chair.
All right, and Dick Rand, are you interested in serving as the chair?
Yes, I would be.
Oh, okay, all right, there you go, all right, well. Okay, that's a motion?
Second.
Okay, and that was a second from Brad. Okay, so on a roll call vote, Mark?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Fran, I. Okay, well now I will relinquish the honor to Dick so he can ask to take nominations for clerk.
We'll take nominations for the officer clerk.
I met Mr. Chair, as opposed to Madam Chair. I nominate Fran as clerk.
Do I have to actually do anything?
You're a second?
Second.
Okay, Brad seconded it. Okay, all those in favor? Mark?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
Hi, so Frank, your clerk, and any other business before the board?
Your set of minutes, your July minutes.
Has anybody read them? Has everybody read them?
I was not at the July meeting, so I will abstain from any vote on the minutes.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes from the July 24th meeting as submitted.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Fran made the motion, Paul seconded it. All those in favor, Fran?
Hi.
Paul?
I'm staying.
Mark?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Suzie?
I was also absent from the July meeting. Sorry, my one chance at voting.
You'll get others, don't worry. Okay, so we have a four acceptance of the minutes, so minutes are accepted. Okay, any other business before the board? Seeing none?
I get to motion again. I will adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, Fran?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Hi, okay, adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.